You need the order, roll call.
Freeston?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Williams?
Yeah.
Sidwell?
Yes.
Horvath?
Yes.
And Horvath.
Yes.
The motion is second approval of the previous minutes.
Motion.
Freeston?
Yes.
Davis?
Yeah.
Williams?
Yes.
Sidwell?
Yes.
Horvath?
Yes.
And Horvath.
Yes.
Report.
The only thing I have, Mr. President and Board, is the passage of this ordinance. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to see it. It basically is an ordinance pursuant to five only file statutes, Act 2120, paragraph 2.06G. And what it provides for is that, you know, prior to tonight's meeting, if somebody wanted to address the court, we would allow them to do so, okay? This particular statute basically provides anyone who wants to address public officials, public officials, of course, are these three people up here and these six. But, you know, God giveth and God take it away. Everybody gets a chance, an opportunity to be heard, as long as it's done in a professional manner. But the municipality in Kent can govern the length that each person gets to address the public officials. And we have chosen two minutes. I'm glad we have, based upon the crowd here tonight, which is nice to see on one hand, but we may be here for a while. I want to address, before we ask the President to entertain a motion, I want to make sure that everybody here tonight knows about this two-minute rule. I've asked the chief via chief deputy, or I'm sorry, sheriff, via chief deputy Engle to make sure that we adhere to that two-minute rule. The, uh, sounds like NFLism. Now, again, I incorporated some language out of the Illinois Municipal League on, it's in section two, and I wish everybody would listen to this because we're going to hold everybody to this also. Says, "While this ordinance shall permit the public to have an opportunity to address public officials," and again, this is right out of the municipal handbook, "it shall not require the public officials to engage in a debate, to make themselves available for abusive or harassing behavior by a member of the public, or to provide on-the-spot answers to members of the public on the topics that are raised by the public." So keep that in mind. Anybody that wants to be heard tonight, you're going to be heard if it takes us until midnight. And if it takes us till midnight, then it's not a violation of the Ordinance Act. So with that said, I would ask for you, Mr. President, to entertain a motion to pass ordinance number 779 as, um, taken forward.
I make a motion.
That's all I have.
Freeston? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Davis?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sidwell?
Yes.
Horvath?
Yes.
And Horvath.
Yes.
Next thing is approval of the bills. Any questions?
I'll second.
Do you mean the motion?
I mean.
Any questions?
Freeston?
Yes.
Davis?
Uh, yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sidwell?
Yes.
Horvath?
Yes.
And Horvath.
Yes.
So the motion is second approval of the treasurer's report.
How much motion?
Second.
The only thing I have is our CD at that March the 15th. And the board wants to continue with it for another year. I called around the beginning of May and middle of November to that.
I'll make a motion and keep with the Midland Bank.
Can we wait and do the treasurer's report first, okay? Freeston?
Yes.
On the treasurer's report. Uh, Davis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sidwell?
Yes.
Horvath?
Yes.
Horvath.
Yes.
Now, if you want to do the CD.
I'll make a motion and keep with CD at Midland Bank.
How long you gonna do it in there?
A year.
Another year.
And who was my second? Freeston?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sidwell?
Yes.
Horvath?
Yes.
And Horvath.
Yes.
Um, I provided a report for you guys. Put it in the folders for you. Uh, the other things that I have for some police department is every year we recertify the radars and it costs $200 to have it, but it has to be done, otherwise the radar is useless. We recalibrate some more. Um, the other thing is, is we got the cage brackets that's in with your, um, your vote on the cost of what that was. Um, they're not compatible with the cages that we had before, the cages that we had before too big. I spoke with Rodney. He stated that he's gonna try to get some donated from another police department, but however, it will cost $25 for him to transport them from the other department here, which is a pretty good deal because cages run a little under $600. And he said that he'd also be able to install each cage for $200 per cage. But that's all up to you. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
I'd go ahead and do the radar guns, the cages, things.
Go ahead and do one thing as separate. Go ahead and do the, uh, go ahead and certify the radars.
Yeah, we definitely have to do that.
Go ahead and make a motion.
I'll make a motion to certify the radar guns.
I'll second that. We gotta vote on that, or?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Freeston?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
No? Sidwell?
Yes.
Horvath?
Yes.
Yes.
And the, uh, do it separately, Rodney, and get those and get them donated for, and like charges $25 for the delivery.
I say we get them, but they're put in the mail, let's see if we can...
And then check elsewhere for the pricing of...
That, or see if our guys can do it.
So I need a motion for the $25.
To pick, yeah, to have Rodney get them for us.
I'll make a motion. I'm, excuse me, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Freeston?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sidwell?
Yes.
Horvath?
Yes.
Yes.
God, do you have anything where you're at?
No.
Debbie, you have anything?
No.
Bill?
Uh, no, I'll wait till, uh, get business.
Kenny?
I'll wait for your business, sir.
Scotty?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing at all.
The only thing I'm asking you guys, if you notice on my pay, I was gone two weeks last month on training for another job, and you paying me $200 a month, and I was asking you to take $100 of that away from me, and I need a motion as second to do something.
Second.
Okay, there was no motion, probably?
Yeah.
Freeston?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sidwell?
Yes.
No.
Horvath? Horvath.
I say no, because when we miss a meeting, we don't take our pay from us.
Anybody got anything under old business? New business? Uh, we have dismissal termination informant of Village Court Cindy Orson.
I'll, I'll start, nobody else does. First off, I'll read a piece out of the paper.
Well, Bill, I'll second.
We need to be able to see Bill.
I need to be able to see local people, but, uh... We can't discuss it until we make a motion.
Okay.
So if you want to make a motion, then if it's seconded, then we'll, we'll go.
All right, I make a motion.
Well, what was the motion?
To, uh, tell these people what I got to say.
A motion to do what?
They're pertaining to the clerk.
To fire her, to get rid of her, or...
Or terminate, yeah, that's right.
So that's, that's your motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. Now discussion, leave it alone.
Okay, first I'll read a piece out of the paper. Okay, it says, "When a quorum of a governor body gathers," first off, I want to tell you that I don't like being accused for something I did not do. Now, here we go, and I got four things.
We need a roll call and a motion for...
Okay. No, 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 no. It's discussion now. Okay. No action continued yet.
Okay, first off, I've been accused of calling this meeting. I've been accused of not knowing the law about the OMA. I've been accused of being ignorant or flagrantly skirting it. I've been accused of taking it for myself to lock up, uh, the lockers. So first off, I'll read you a piece out of the Breese Courier. Says, "When a quorum of a governing body gathers, it's a meeting, it's a meeting, it's a meeting, no matter what, even if it's a bona fide emergency." Now, this guy here, whoever wrote that ain't too bright, I'll tell you that right now. Says, "When there's a meeting, Illinois law requires notice to the public." I agree with that part of it. So let me tell you, there was no meeting. Now, this guy would have checked the, uh, OMA thing. It says, "When a, when a quorum of members of a public body comes together, it's to be held for the purpose of discussing public business," which we did not do. It says, "More simply put, for the purposes of OMA, a meeting is a gathering of a majority of a quorum held to discuss public business." Then it goes on and says, "OMA does not apply to purely the social gathers. The mere presence of at least a majority of the quorum of a public body members at a gathering is not sufficient to make the gathering a meeting for a purpose of OMA." So then I read in the paper here that the clerk says, "Kent State Board members met this morning to take care of business that might have been related to the rest of Kent State Mayor's yesterday." And it goes on over here and says, "Village clerk Cindy Orson stated in a phone conversation that four of the six members of the village board were present for the meeting." I want to know what meeting that was, because we didn't have no meeting. So, and S is, you know, you started out pretty good when you told that guy from the newspaper, no comment, so you should not comment here because you're saying a meeting, we didn't have a meeting. You knew that as well as everybody else. And, and to further back up my, what you call it, if you want to, uh, I'll go to, uh, so after we had this meeting, supposedly meeting, then we get a letter from the Office of Attorney General, I guess more or less charging us with a little illegal meeting. It says, "Village clerk," here's what the newspaper wrote, it says, "Village clerk Orson, Cindy Orson, confirmed by telephone that four of the six members were present. You didn't have to form that. That's the only way that guy knew who we was." Then it goes on down here and says, "Trustee Bill Davis," now, how did he get my name unless you must evidently must have told him? The only thing I can think of. "Denies that a meeting took place," and absolutely, we told you right in there, four of us. There was no meeting here. The only thing we was waiting on is that, I don't know how to pronounce his name, the deaf up there. Eber, Eberlin? That's the only thing we's been waiting on him. It says, "These public, those public denies, I believe, are proof of Davis's fundamental lack of understanding of the Illinois Open Meeting Act." It seems to me like the guy from the newspaper didn't know exactly what he was talking about. Okay, here's another, here's the next one. "Most disturbing of all," this comes, this is out of your Breese Courier. Are you the Breese Courier guy?
No, I am the Breese Courier.
Who's the Breese Courier guy? Well, right here, see, that's come right out of your thing here. It says, "Most disturbing of all," it says, "Members of this board who are either ignorant of the law or flagrantly skirting it, relying perhaps on bad advice." We didn't rely on bad advice. We knew exactly what the meeting was all about. There was no meeting. We were just, uh, going to this guy right up here.
You just said there was a meeting.
Well, okay, we stood in front of this guy right up here, and if you want to call him a liar, then you guys can call him a liar. Let me see, let me find that here. I'll quote, uh, I'll quote him. First, it says, uh, "To answer the first one, uh, to lock up the evidence locker, Dave Fines will verify this." He said, "I called Bill Davis, senior trustee on the village board, and requested that he place a lock on the evidence locker in order to ensure that whatever is in the evidence locker remained intact. I agreed to do it. Based upon the investigation at that time of Thomas, Doug Thomas and Chief Adams, it was essential that the village secure the evidence." Now, I'll, I'll quote this, this, uh, what, how you pronounce his name? Eberlin? It says, "I advise," uh, here, uh, I'm quoting, uh, Dave Fines, he said, "I advise Bill Hogan that I would recommend that Chief Adams also be placed on administrative leave of absence with pay as chief, uh, police for the village of Kent State until investigation was completed. Is my understanding in speaking with Bruce Engle, chief deputy, that placing Chief Adams on administrative leave of absence with pay basically entailed meeting with the chief, taking his gun, and securing other documents and identification. Chief Deputy Engle agreed to assist the village in completing this paper." It says, and he goes on to say, he said, uh, Dave Fines said, "I confirm with Chief Deputy Engle that Corvath, Davis, Williams, and Hogan said nothing while he was placing Chief Adams on administrative leave of absence with pay." So the only thing we did was stood and listened to, and the chief put our thing on there. So evidently, the newspaper didn't know too much about what they was talking about. And neither did Cindy, because she should have noticed, because she is the officer that should know about the OMA meeting.
All of you are.
Absolutely.
Every one of you should know it.
And I took my test, and that's why I'm saying, I know exactly what it says in there.
Most of you just took your test in the last two days.
I took it last year, and really, if you read it, it says in there that you don't have to take it one time during all the time you're, that you're...
But if you read it this year again, the questions have changed and there are new rules.
I don't, I don't.
That's why it should be done every year.
But we took it. Mr. President, may I just make a comment? I want to make sure everybody understands, uh, one thing, that Bill Davis is, uh, with regard to the Attorney General's office.
Right.
Okay, the Attorney General's office is a government body. If there is a complaint about the West violation of the Community Act, uh, anybody can make an inquiry to AG's office to, uh, look into it. The Breese Courier did that. What Bill's reading from when he says Dave Fines, Dave Fines, he's exactly right.
Is your, is your attitude...
It's my response to the Attorney General's office.
Absolutely.
So it's not something that Bill is, uh, making up.
No, it's not, Bill.
This has already been placed in the hands...
That's there, Dave Fines, whatever.
It's already been placed in the hands of the AG's office.
Right. Oh, I want to let you know, all these things cost money, if I was a lawyer here, I'd be charging you for all this stuff because really, this was all unnecessary. All this stuff right now is unnecessary, but, uh, I'm not blaming Dave for charging it. That's, uh, that's part of what I got to say. Now, the reason why this come off, Cindy, you messed up payroll, you messed up water bills, and every time you get a chance, it seems like you try to make the board look bad. We don't like it out here. We don't like that. Just like last meeting, you was, uh, hollering about overtime. Guess what, we had what? Uh, two water leak, two main breaks, the guy worked overtime or three. We had two big snows, they had the plow streets, you know, and that's your job. It ain't your job to holler about overtime.
When have I ever yelled about overtime?
I hear it all the time.
It was not mentioned in the meeting.
In this meeting, I have never spoken about the overtime and the payroll.
Whatever makes you happy, I hear all this stuff.
Wait a minute.
And that's gossip, because you got spies.
No, I...
Wait a minute here, folks, if we're gonna expect the public to act in a, an orderly fashion, we're gonna have to set an example ourselves. Unless I argue back and forth, let's just, Bill has the force, let Bill, and then let's...
And then I'll, I'll continue on right here. Said the same way, uh, several things, uh, the same way, the other day, when Pat come down to the house, he couldn't get in, and I think, as far as I know, and I think that the committee know, Pat takes care of the water bills. He come down to the house, said he couldn't get in the safe. I said, "Why?" He said, "Because there was another safe within the safe that you locked the money up." Well, he was, uh, people was here to pay their water bill, which is his job to do that. I come up here and I jumped on you, and you said, "Well, we took it upon ourselves." Well, that's the problem around here. You took it upon yourself instead of asking this board, the governor body, you took it upon yourself. This has happened a lot.
What time does the office open?
Pat?
Nine AM.
Pat, uh, now, Pat is all, I know that, Pat is always took water bills at seven o'clock and about two.
Nine AM the office opens.
Well, whatever turns you on. It says, "Okay, code of conduct, being insubordinate to or showing disrespect towards superiors." I got Richard and Cindy on that. And acting to perform the job or performing the job inefficiently. Richard and Cindy, uh, does that. Engaging in a conduct unbecoming a village employee or that discredits the village. I think you did a very good job on that. Being discourteous to the public, I've heard numerous accounts about you mailing off the people paying their water bills and stuff. I've heard this, and I know that a lot of the members have said the same thing. Okay, uh, Richard, I, here's, I got Richard, you...
You can't discuss Richard.
Well, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, Bill.
Yeah.
Let, let's take these things one at a time.
Okay, okay, I got, uh, down here. Failure to perform essential functions of his or her position, just Cindy. Abusing village, uh, computer, and I've heard numerous complaints about you letting the kid up here on the computers. I've heard complaints about you babysitting. This is all coming in, and, and I can see why the board is, especially, I, I'm tired of, basically.
And our employees, they get on there to get car parts and stuff for their own vehicles, isn't Bill?
I'm not gonna argue that point.
Your son, your son is one of them. They all are.
I'm not gonna argue that, I'm just saying, this is...
And I really think we don't need to argue at all. I think whoever wants to be heard, uh, the trustees, Bill...
Okay, my, uh, my, my thoughts, my belief is, she needs to be terminated, but I won't make the motion because I think I'll let the rest of the board decide what they want to do, and I'll go along with their decision.
Was there a motion?
There's already a motion.
Uh-huh. I, I'd like to see these guys here, uh, talk a little bit too.
And I think Cindy needs to be heard also. Right now, right now, there's a motion and a second. Now, that, right now here, it is discussion.
No motion.
Nobody's seconding it.
Nobody's seconding it.
Still, again, second.
You didn't second it, Kenny? Okay.
There's no second, then there's no vote.
No, there's gonna be a vote, there's gonna be a vote.
It's a lack of, lack of seconds, there is no vote.
Okay, if you want me to make a motion, hold on, hold on. I'll make a motion, and we terminate it.
You already did that.
Well, now, listen, listen, let's do our best to follow parliamentary procedure here. I thought there was a second.
No.
No?
Okay, well, then, there's, then now you're gonna make the same motion.
I'll make the motion.
And that motion is to terminate Cindy Orson as village clerk. Okay, now, if there is a second, then there additional discussion can be had. If there is no second, then the motion basically fails for the lack of a second.
Right.
I'll make, I'll make the motion second.
Any more discussion?
Well, I, I totally agree with Bill, and I've said the paper runs, runs through the colds, or Kent State through, through the cold, and, uh, I believe that Cindy should be retired from the job. I spoke on...
Does anybody else want to be heard?
I have one thing to say. Cindy, as to your comment, you made a comment the other day at the meeting that I seemed awfully quiet, that I didn't say much. I did have a problem. There was a comment made as soon as we walked in here before the meeting about overtime. You did say it. And it was clear that you had a problem with how much overtime we were spending on snow removal when that comment was made.
Can I explain to you what she was talking to me about?
No. This is Cindy's. That's, that, that was one of the things that was brought up, and I, I was gonna ask you, I was waiting for the second. I want to ask you what, where are your, where do you feel about this? What, call this?
Truth? Truth, here it comes. When we sit and, and we do head projects, and then, oh, yay, we get a water leak, or yay, we got snow, then I have to talk about it.
And what do you mean by head projects?
Working on our mud trucks, working on our trailers, whatever you want.
Are we talking about after hours, or are we talking about during work hours?
We're talking work hours.
Okay, my question would be, is why has this never been brought to this board or during a meeting?
You, you knew about this when I first got into office. I mentioned it and had stopped them working on their mud trucks, because the mayor was helping them work on their mud trucks during the day, five and six hours a day they had were working on it. The whole time before I got elected, they were in here working on them. Bill?
Uh, that's a lie.
Am I Tony or Bill?
Bill.
Between, I'm not sure if I'm catching the timeline there, but...
Before I became mayor, I was up here, you know, a lot.
Yeah.
Because I did the ordinance books and everything, which never got done by the mayor either. They were sitting there for six months on the floor. I'm the one ended up doing them, with David, because they never got done. But every day I was here, four or five hours, they were working on those mud trucks or nothing I could say at the time, and he was out there helping.
Now, here's the other thing, though, that one of the other complaints was that you were up here on the computer when you were not an elected official.
When?
During this period of time.
Several times.
I mean, it, it, the problem is, is we can swing mud here all night, it who did what, it's not gonna get anything done.
No, it's not.
We can point fingers at, at the employees that work up here, or we can point at Cindy.
Is I had to call Tommy in on a Saturday to come, because it was supposed to, rain's supposed to be coming, and Friday, they sit out there and didn't do nothing, and then Saturday, we had to call him in for overtime to go clean out the drains. That, that's uncalled for.
The drains were froze that day, and then I come in on Saturday, because the rain softened it up, and there were two pros to clean off. Then dollars...
About the week I'm talking about.
I don't, I just, I got, I have to keep us focused here. Right now, Sidwell has the force, and we're discussing, uh, village clerks.
And I'm not pointing fingers, I'm putting information out here that needs to be heard so you understand before there is a vote at this table where people stand on this. Okay? Yes, we've all heard the complaints about the computers and stuff like that that's happened for a few, you know, six, eight months, 10 months, however long. So we're as much guilty for not standing up and saying something when we did, but we let it slide, hoping that this stuff would move on. But it still doesn't excuse the fact that we've had some issues with people coming up here and paying their water bills, and you have an attitude. I have no for a fact that has happened. And there again...
And the incident you're talking of?
One of the times with my own wife.
Your wife, that's what I thought.
Yes, one of them.
That's the only one I know of. I'm in here all the time.
Yeah. And maybe that's part of the problem.
No, it's not part of the problem because Pat's being, you're doing it, Pat gets paid to do it and, and she doesn't.
And if you're here, why is that happening? If you're in charge, why is that happening?
Not here.
Where's Pat at then?
Out on the street.
Well, aren't you his boss?
Yep, and so are you, all six of you.
Exactly. But aren't you the mayor, aren't you up here?
I get hollered at if I take authority without asking anybody, is that not true?
No.
Yes, that was what I heard.
Who hollered at you?
All of you have.
For what?
For, for doing things without your approval.
As in?
Many of the things, that's what I heard before I ever got back in here.
Like going to get in Humvee without board approval, that would be one.
I was in Pennsylvania, I wasn't even here.
No, you were here.
No, I was not.
That's before you left when that happened, yes it was.
That's where you're wrong.
No, I was not wrong, because that is exactly what happened. And that happened while you were here.
No. I was in Pennsylvania when that happened.
And then regardless, it doesn't matter at this point. That's a done deal and it's moved on. I just wanted to see where Cindy, what Cindy had to say to the comments and the accusations that's been made. I'm kinda surprised honestly when you got put on the agenda that you didn't take the time to at least call some of the board members and see what was going on.
She didn't know why.
The decision is made, there, there's three votes right there. How, how can I possibly work here? It's a hostile environment, I've been intimidated.
Who made it hostile?
Threatened.
Hostile?
Seth had to take him outside that day.
Oh, Seth didn't take me outside.
Yes, he did, Seth did you not?
How did you block him out?
Seth walked outside and I told Seth, I was doing what I know he did.
And then Seth, what did he say to you? Honest to God, what did he tell you outside that door?
I told him, I said, I was doing my duty.
If he kept, and if he kept hanging with us, he would lose his job.
Huh?
If he kept hanging with the people he was hanging with, he would lose his job. Did you not say that?
Yes, sir.
There you go. That's a threat. That is a threat. That is threatening our office.
I thought I was giving him good advice.
That's called official misconduct.
He's hanging with Richard, look what happened, now just give me good advice, stay away from him.
Yes.
You know, all this about the mud trucks and working on vehicles and all that goes on up here at this village, the problem is, there's some stuff up here that I've worked on probably, most of these people in this room, some, board members, officials, whatever. There's times I turn in a bill, or never turned in a bill working on anything for this village after hours. I had permission to work on, uh, my mud truck for an hour or two or whatever before this hall took into place. Okay? I give so much to this village for nothing. I don't charge them for nothing. I didn't, the first time this year, I gave Cindy a bill for what, two hundred dollars probably for working on a vehicle and I haven't charged for a couple of years. I maintain everything up at this village office. I'm the water operator, I'm the sewer, I'm the street, I'm water bill collector, I do all the handhelds. I don't do, charge nothing for a lot of this work that I do up here. And then people wanna slam me for working on stuff on my own time and a lot of it, I had permission to do. If it was an hour or two, that was my time. I, I hear, I pick the ton, the truck to count for lunch, you know, that's my hour lunch. How many times have I went up to the tailor's and picked up parts, went to Duke's office supply, went to David Fine's office, all on my lunch hour?
Well, with all due respect, uh, Pat, I'm glad, I'm glad that the, the president recognized you.
We need to get back to what we were talking about.
We need to stay focused on, I know that things that are gonna be said and I can make, you know, Pat Durbin mad or somebody. Well, I know, I know, but I mean, but just keep it on focus or else we, we will be here. Does he now, does anybody else have that, Ms. Do you have anything to say?
I wanna continue.
Hang on.
I wanna continue.
What about, uh, I can't even see Debbie.
Well, you know, the whole deal with getting, getting placed on the agenda, I write the agenda. That to me is public humiliation. I had to distribute it to the police courier, to the local, uh, news radio station, at the post office and on the front door.
You don't like doing that?
Quit.
No, I'm not quitting.
That's your job.
Well, yeah, it is my job, but the thing is, you and I got into an argument.
Exactly, what was it for?
About three or four days ago, about three or four days before this comes out. Do you not think that's bullying and intimidation, putting my termination on this paper?
Why did we get in an argument?
Because I, Beverly and I discussed it. I think the water office is short sometimes and we decided that you should count the money every night and that you should put it in the lockbox instead of just throwing it in the bottom of the sink.
You decided, you decided. What, what was it? How come you didn't come and ask us before you decided?
Oh, she asked me.
Oh, so you make the decision, okay.
That's the, that's right there. I can't make a decision without you approving, you said's all I can.
The only reason why.
You backtrack every time.
The only reason why you decided to do that is because I had a key to lock up the evidence locker and you decided.
And you weren't, and you were not even a senior trustee.
What does your key to the evidence locker have to do with anything?
That has nothing to do with her job.
I figured it was probably retaliation because I had the key and you guys didn't like it.
Who gives a shit?
I have nothing to do with what's going on with the police officer or the, the mayor.
Then you should've kept quiet.
This is a personal problem with you.
No, you should've kept your mouth shut and not called the newspaper and informed.
I didn't call the newspaper.
Okay, if they informed, no, he called back, he called back and you informed him that when I was in a meeting. You should've just kept your mouth shut and said, no comment.
I never called to the meeting.
You're doing the interview on TV, who kept their mouth shut?
She didn't call the meeting.
You accused me of stealing from that evidence locker and I did not, have nothing to do with that. Then, guess you did. It was on TV, you accused me.
Yes.
It was on live TV.
Okay, guys, alright, okay, okay.
Alright, Cindy, are you done?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, let's take a vote now. Debbie?
What are they voting on?
You're voting on Cindy's termination?
Debbie?
No.
Bill?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Just have to write their names down.
Sudwell?
Yes.
Verbit?
Yes.
Hogan?
No.
He's your ass, Cindy, kiss my ass, you'll damn it.
And she will be my back, I guarantee you that, because she will be gone.
Before she got here, you couldn't even pay your bill, hey? Bill?
You'll see.
You couldn't even get your bill paid before she came here. Because you had a Daryl had taken the money.
Official misconduct, we've been telling you, with the state and you, and you, and you. Bill Davis, sir, all of your business.
You gotta have them son, we'll be investigating. We know you know.
They're back and forth in front of us.
Yeah.
I didn't lie about mine.
Yeah, nobody here lied about anything either.
Bill Davis did say.
You can talk to Bill Davis, Spencer Sudwell did not do anything wrong. I wasn't even at the meeting, lady.
Next is dismissal of chief termination employment of Chief Adams.
Wait a minute, now, wait a minute, now, now, I have this county, uh, Christian sheriff here. I have a chief deputy and a state police officer. If we can't keep this, you know, unruliness intact, then.
And trustees too.
Who will, and I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you, but the public will not be recognized during our regular meeting. So I don't want the public to start arguing with my trustees until you have an opportunity to, if you stick around long enough, and I hope you do. But we are not gonna have outbursts every single time somebody doesn't like what one of my trustees or the president, or now the treasurer's the only one left here. Okay, we're not gonna have that. We're gonna conduct this meeting like it should be conducted like any other time, alright? Is that fair, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
And I want everybody to stay, by the way.
Dismissal, termination employment of Chief Police Richard Adams or an alternative to continued administrative leave of absence without pay.
Okay, you want a motion? Is that what you're asking?
There's gotta be a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Discussion.
Motion on what? To terminate or to be, since his investigation isn't over. His investigation is not over yet.
Here's your village code, code right here.
Yeah, I did, I know everyone, I read through the whole book.
It says charged with a misdemeanor or felony.
He's been charged but not convicted.
It doesn't say convicted on here, it just says charged, so I, I make a motion.
He has not had a misdemeanor or, or felony.
Wait a minute, now, we're discussing.
Right.
We have to have a motion for it. Bill, what's your motion?
I make a motion, we terminate Richard Adams.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it, yeah.
Okay, now, zero second.
Zero second.
Okay, now we can have some discussion. Preferably not arguing back and forth.
The only thing he has been charged with is official misconduct, that is not one of the two things you just raised.
I'm talking about right here.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, he's not been charged with that.
Charged with misdemeanor or felony, that's exactly what our rules say.
And?
I mean, I mean, if you wanna change the rules, I guess you can, but that's what it says.
Okay, has he been charged with misdemeanor or felony?
Absolutely, he has, yes, sir. Read the newspaper, listen to TV. I think it was class three, class three felony, I think, is where he's charged with.
For official misconduct? That's the only thing I know of.
That's the only thing I know of too.
It's class three felony's all I know.
Official misconduct is not a class three felony.
Well, you don't have to argue that with the, whoever, you know. All I'm telling you is, is, uh, he was charged.
He didn't do anything different than any of your, all your others up there.
Well, I, you know.
All your time of work.
Ask the guy up there, I, I.
Yeah, and he's been charged with a felony.
That's what I'm saying.
Disorderly conduct.
I don't know.
Misconduct can be rights to the law. I'm saying you don't know, you're, you're breaking the motion.
I'm just going by what the rules, I'm following the rules. And most of the calls, all the calls I've had is they don't want Richard back. So maybe they do, I don't know.
I have no complaints.
Anybody else who wanna talk, their members have a complaint.
I think we need to wait it out till more charges, if there is any more, or if they, if they're dropped, I think I need ISP to do their job.
I, I understand too, that's how I agree, until the investigation's over, I don't think anything should be done.
Because if it gets, I mean.
Everything can be dropped.
Yes, I've heard a lot of things, but.
And then you can be sued. So you have a motion and a second.
And a second.
So it's to the vote.
Debbie?
No.
Bill?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Sudwell?
No. Yes.
No.
Then he will stay on as, as police chief and he will continue to be paid.
What was the vote, what was it?
Three and three.
It was three and three. And I'm the tie vote. And he will stay on administrative leave with pay. Okay, now we have under dismissal, termination employment of police chief, police officer Seth Foster. What's the motion?
For. Leaving of his duty.
Uh, for what reason?
I don't have to give a rap.
You don't?
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies like a second, Seth, you still have your job.
Yeah, right.
Way to go, Seth.
Alright.
Mike Lawrence, you're on the agenda next.
I would like everyone here tonight, especially if you're one of those people who do not want to get involved, but are the first to complain, to really listen to what my wife Shannon is about to say. These are facts, not some Facebook rantings. This is our community, guys, and if we want to see and make a difference, we need the good citizens to open their eyes and get involved.
Mister Mayor, once again, we are here to ask you to resign your position.
No.
You have continuously demonstrated your disdain for this community and its people. When you ran for this position, Mayor, you should've taken the time to review what the position entails because you have drastically filled your purse in duty. Under the Illinois Comp Act Statute sixty-five IL CS five, Illinois Municipal Code, Section six four seven, Mayor, Powers and Duties, it states the powers and duties of the mayor shall be, to enforce the laws and ordinances within the municipality and to exercise control of all departments and divisions thereof created in this area of the city. Or that may be free of the county. You have been leader of this. On the first matter, until a citizen complains about a violation, you do not enforce the laws and ordinances. And then when you do, you and/or your administration inform the violator that so-and-so has complained and to take it up for them. These are city ordinances and state laws, not our personal requests. On the second matter, you are at the city building every day or riding around with a police complaint and you want us to believe that you don't know what your chief of police is doing? In an interview with Channel twenty news, you were asked, you had all plans to resign from Mayor Comp Act, you responded, no, I do not. When asked why, you responded, there's no reason to, it has nothing to do with the village of Comp Act itself. Who, Mister Mayor, do you think you're blowing? Your actions have everything to do with this community. One of your trustees had received an alleged threat, it was followed through because of your actions. Are you aware that this community currently has a possible school control consolidation? Do you know the questions and concerns of those parents? Will we do?
Yeah.
They question why they should consolidate with the community whose mayor has been arrested for violating an order of protection and during that arrest was found to be in possession of an illegal controlled substance, which is a class four felony. Also, because of our corrupt police force, they worry about their children's safety. But worst of all is knowing that they are willing to send their children into a community whose citizens are aware of some of that and choose to turn blind on it. So as you can see, Mister Mayor, when you break laws, your personal affairs can have an effect on this community. This community needs to progress, not be less. We, the people of this community, voted you in to be a leader, not a tyrant. You took mouth to the people, upheld the law, but you seem to think you're above it. By no violation, you are setting a great example of absence of honor, integrity, and legality to the great citizens of this community. We deserve better than this. My fellow citizens, I would like to say, don't be a part of the problem, be a part of the solution. Stop dealing with social media, to ease your concerns and frustration, use your voice. We voted for these people to represent us, let them know your concerns, not just about this incident, but about everything that's going on. Come to the meetings, this is still our community and it's time we get involved. Something for the members of this community to think about. Are you willing to continue to use taxpayers' dollars to pay for your salary until the end of this term? Either way you look at it, he will no longer be able to perform his duties as mayor because one, he has lost the respect and trust we had for him. And two, for fear of repercussion, he will not have the confidence to take on hard situations his job requires. Doug, this has nothing to do with you personally, we have all made mistakes and poor decisions in our lives and we've had to face the consequences of those facts. Mister Mayor, you have been leveraging your duties as an honorable leader and we request that you step aside. We need and want a leader to help our community because it is in our heart, not his own. Your, your support is personal conflict, are leaving this community in a state of wonder. Therefore, preventing this community from moving forward. Trustees, thank you for allowing us the time to voice our requests and concerns. To all future and current elected officials, let this be a lesson well worth. This community does not serve you, you are the servants of this community. We are a community of one and as such, we will no longer tolerate or accept fractures from our elected officials.
I have charges pending, I have not been convicted of anything.
That's right.
That is the end of the subject. I have not been convicted. That's right.
That's alright, don't be scared.
I have led this community for twenty-eight years, you haven't been here. Look at our funds now from when I started.
I've been here since I'm forty-three years old, I've been here since I've been here.
Yes. You look back when I started and look at our funds now what we have. Your actions for the last year have been disgusting. That's your campaign.
Wait a minute, are we not the ones that vote? Did we got the voice here? Not you voted him in.
No, we did.
I did, I did. And I'll stand beside you my hundred percent.
Look where we're at now.
Oh, well. Clean your closet.
If you wanna go outside and beat the hell out of one another, it all means. Now, while you're in here, let's just speak civilly, okay? Alright?
I will not step down, that is the end of the subject. Next thing is resolution for the surplus. We need a resolution, as far as I'm concerned, we do not need the surplus anymore, it has been abused. That surplus has been abused by board members and everyone else, I do not think we need to do a new resolution for the surplus. That is my opinion, you may vote.
I think we need to keep it, but I think we need to, uh.
Limit. For village only, not for people to take stuff.
Two or three people, two or three people need to sign into.
We're not talking about anybody, I haven't heard.
I haven't said anything about you.
Right.
What do we gotta eliminate, to, I think we need to keep it.
You wanna do the resolution, we have to vote the resolution in.
I think we need to keep it, but I think we need to get a better handle on it.
Why don't we, why don't we just, why don't we just table that issue, uh, and.
Draw something up.
Is it actually a resolution? And why don't we draw something up so that we can make whatever limitations you folks want?
Just put a couple people's names on it and they gotta sign inventory in, inventory out, just, it's, we get a lot of.
Yeah, I, I know, I understand what the surplus is. Would that be, would somebody, uh, with you as president entertain a motion, you table that, please?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, okay.
I second it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Bill?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sidwell?
Yes.
Corvus?
Yes.
Yes.
And next, any other visitor would like to talk?
Two minutes, yes. Wait a minute, let's, um, let's try to do this somewhat organized. Can we start over here and just act, you know, how many people want to say something? Is that all? Okay, whoa, 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 let's not, let's not debate here. Let's just, let's go this way, so you're the first. Well, I'll get in there. Yeah, Chief Deputy England will time you, so you have two minutes. Again, nothing derogatory, or nothing that's harassing. The little thing, just, uh, address the buck of, uh, now.
Please, first of all, how's your name? My name is Jeff Basil, I'm a forty-seven-year-old resident of Kincaid, and I would like to say that I think the village trustees need to meet with the state attorney and have Doug, our mayor, removed from office on grounds of misconduct for the arrest of a violation of order of protection and on the drug charges. We do not want a forty-eight-year-old man who feels that he is right in making love with a seventeen-year-old or eighteen-year-old boy
Did anybody say that?
and needs supervision around our children or grandchildren. And as far as with the cops, I hope some of you guys have voted to keep him. I hope when they do their next thing, I hope it's your children or your grandchildren that he ends up with, not one of ours.
Yeah.
He needs to be held accountable for your actions. You are no man to the police chief. Thank you.
Jeff, can I please have a copy of that? Mike Lawrence, can I please have a copy of...
I already ran out of here.
He's right here.
He's not running.
Can I just have a copy of that? It's not ready. That's fine.
Okay, the next, the next one, hey, hang on.
They don't want to go right here.
Hang on.
I'm not going to put it in the paper.
No, don't even worry about it. Name?
Gina Watson. And I'd like to have, address Mr. Davis. Uh, you guys fired Cindy because she talked to Grace Carrier, but I seen you on TV.
That's right, yep.
And who made you the spokesman for the board?
Somebody, it's somebody.
You did say that the drugs may have...
May have, may have, that's what I was told.
Who told you that?
Not that's the report.
Who told you that? And why would you tell that without even knowing it?
I knew that, that's why I said I was told by the investigator, that's what they... What do you think they put you on there for?
But why would you say that without knowing that for sure?
I think that we interviewed after that, we found out.
And on Facebook, which I, everyone knows what Facebook, but you did say that there was four people up here, four board members, and a cop that was putting stuff in the evidence locker, telling you what he was doing.
Ask that man right up there.
That should be considered a meeting.
Well, you need, you need to know the law. You need to know the law.
I, I, you know what? I was on the board for eight years in Tarrahill.
Okay.
And when four people got together, and if there was any mention of village, city, anything, it was considered a forum, and it was considered a meeting.
Well, you should have read the OMA rules. Ask that man up there, we never said nothing, he told us.
I didn't say he's...
Wait a minute.
I said, you said, he was telling me what he was doing about Richard Adams, so a village employee was being discussed.
We are not going to discuss anything from here on out, and I don't think that, that, you know, we violate anything by that, I mean, we just do not want to interrupt or interfere with the ongoing investig- investigation for both President Thomas and Chief Adams, okay? So, these gentlemen are not going to, including, I assume, Mr. Foster, are not going to comment on that, so you can't ask, uh, I mean, prefer you not ask our trustees about the investigation, because we don't want to upset the investigation.
So then, who are you going to ask, Bill?
Okay, just five two minutes left, can I still say something?
I've still got thirty seconds.
Okay, and Mr. Davis, on Facebook, you is very rude, you called one lady an idiot.
You're attacking him.
You called another, no, not the same lady, he called another lady and told her that she lacked education.
Okay.
And you're voted on and paid to represent...
If you don't want to know the, if you don't want to know the law, then you want to be an idiot. See, you need to check the law out, otherwise, you will be one. That, that's what, that's what it's all about, so you won't be ignorant of the law.
But you're not ignorant of the law whenever you're saying stuff that you don't even know for sure is a fact.
Whatever.
Okay, uh, the next, okay, that's where you've been with the investigation. We'll get to everybody, though.
Hi, I'm Ann Zabel, called a taxpayer in the city of Kincaid. If the allegations that have been made are true, why are there not any checks and balances? Why are the city workers working on Richard Adams' house on city time? The city workers had to know that they shouldn't be doing it, did they not have enough guts to say no? Who else knew they were working on the house on city time? What is going to happen to the city workers and the supervisor or supervisors of the city workers? There needs to be check and balances for everything, from using the city truck to city workers. None of the city vehicles or city workers should be used for personal gain on city time.
Okay? Okay, Mark Smith, then I'll get you in blue shirt, sir.
Name is Mark Smith, I have a question. A couple questions first, I'd like to know when the last time a inventory on the evidence locker was done? Uh, I don't think, I don't think we need, I don't think we can comment on that.
Okay.
Because, uh, the Illinois State Police is directly involved with that.
All right, very good.
Okay.
What about an inventory of the actual police equipment, guns, radios, scopes? Okay, everything's accounted for, they said. Everything is accounted for? Yes. Okay.
Last year around November, December, I received a phone call from a friend of mine. She told me that she had received a phone call from Doug Thomas, basically warning her to stay away from me. The reason, the Kincaid PD had received a tip from an insurance company that I was going to burn down my new garage, and that I was being watched. You didn't want her to get caught up in it and get in trouble. To me, this has to borderline obstruction of justice. You're an official of the village and the police commissioner. Do you think the sheriff would call for any of his and warn him to stay away from some people that might be selling drugs, or shoplifting, or stealing from homes? I don't think so, and neither should you. But you might, because of your past actions. I ask that you please resign from the position as Mayor Kincaid.
No, because there's no truth to that.
Yes, there is. And she's one with justice, by her word.
Okay, the gentleman in blue told...
My name is John Durbin, I own a business here in Kincaid. And as the mayor of Kincaid, I'd say he's the man up and stepped down, as for the village employees, and being a plumber, I've been around them, working on broken mains, after hours, et cetera. And I'm really proud of them, the board, it's a pretty good board you got going there. Another thing that bugs me is, uh, we're all standing out as citizens outside the front door when you got family and friends, Mayor, inside here sitting down, which...
I didn't open the door for that.
We are taxpayers, we work for us. That's all I got to say.
Is that it? Okay. The President said allow me to just pick, you know, as we go around, okay? Well, wait a minute here. Go ahead. Where I go backwards.
Yeah, stand up there.
I got me hand up, the...
Oh, I didn't see her.
That's okay.
I was in the way.
Go ahead, this gentleman.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Steve Rapaport, I've lived in the community about ten years, I've lived in Kincaid for about eight months, uh, and I agree with the mayor, he, he has not been convicted of any crimes. However, I am a student, uh, my daughter goes to school in Edinburgh, and I've gone to the meetings there, and what's happened is people have lost confidence of this great community because of the allegations of what's going on with the mayor. It's very difficult to step down from a position when you might not be guilty, you might not be found guilty, and I can appreciate that. However, it just puts a blemish on the community, and we, we want to consolidate schools, which is probably a good thing, help out both communities. However, there's a lot of questions now, and how bad is that going to tarnish the things that are going on? And I'm just telling you the way I feel.
Andy Laswell?
Police courier, Andy Laswell. I'd like to ask the mayor a question. This gentleman made a good point, Miss Lawrence made a good point, too. Do you believe that these accusations are honestly not going to, that would impact any consolidation with Edinburgh?
I have no nothing about consolidation. I'm not, I have nothing to do with consolidation.
So you don't, but my question was, you believe they would impact any future consolidation with the neighboring school district?
I don't know.
We see school districts all around, more so, hand handle, that are strolling to get by and joining.
I do not know.
You don't know, okay. And also, regarding Miss Orson, um, the only time that, that I spoke to Miss Orson was when I had occasion to come in here, and I did see the board, village trustees. The second time was when I called and I had asked Miss Orson if there was, um, four board members, she confirmed that. That, that's the only conversation we've ever had. I would invite anybody in this community to come talk to me about this Open Means Act violation, I'm not going to waste time here, but I say that just wait for the Illinois Attorney General's office to make the decision, I'm not going to get involved in this thing about, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, Pat Durbin in the back?
Yeah, you know, I spoke my piece a while ago. I've been here fourteen years, uh, there's a couple right over there in white jacket, I worked on the water, leek out on the highway at twelve-thirty at night, froze my butt off, laying in frozen water, they know what I do here.
Pat, who are you addressing?
I'm addressing everybody that has something to do with this village. I've been here for ten years.
Are you addressing the, the public officials? Because that's who you're, that's who's...
Public, public. I'm manning up, if they want to write me up and send me home for three days, do it. But everything we've done up here, we've either had permission, we've worked on their stuff, we've worked on everything, we've helped people out in this community, people don't see what we do after hours. You know, we're the ones out there laying in the freaking thing getting sick, whatever. You know, I just want to say, I'm manning up, fourteen years I've been here, I'm manning up to take the days off. If they want to write me up and send me home, do it.
Hey, Pat, don't worry about, as far as I'm concerned, we're not going to do nothing with you.
Uh, I want to get the lady, the lady in the purple.
My name is Anna Wise, um, my husband worked up here for eighteen years, and I, I know most of you know that, and some of the stuff that he had to go through, being an employee, so I'm definitely with Pat on this, I know where he's coming from. The other thing I want to say is I really, 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 really want the community to think about the other three people that sit up on that thing. One of them walked out today. There are three more of them up there that are no different. Our board members are trying to do what they can with what they have to work with, period. And Seth, thank you for taking care of us a lot.
This gentleman back against the wall before he...
I used to have a column in on, before I was supposed to be on the computer, in the car parks, I don't even know the code to get on the computers up here, so I, that's a lie, I wasn't ever on the computer up there.
Okay? And the gentleman right, right in front of you?
I'm like Sam Burnin Wise, he's probably a lot, a lot of yous know me, I worked in this community for eighteen years, I always put on the same pedestal that many of these gentlemen, the President, Chief of Police, Pat. I, I was there, at the time, I was not allowed, I could not afford to represent myself, but as a citizen, eighteen years I've put in this community, I did the right thing for my family, for my community, and walked away from this. As for the city employees, I worked with Pat and these gentlemen firsthand for simple fact that I know what's going on in this town, they call me on a regular basis because I am one of the few, it's not on maps, but it's up in here. The administrators, the presidents of this board, what they do on their own free time is their business, but it is now a reflection on our community. And I do not feel like we can move on with that leadership that we have, because we have been blemished bad. Doug Thomas, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, has done a good job for this community, but the boundaries have been stepped over. In the public eye, in the television, newspaper, it is out there, I am in sales, I travel a lot of area, and it's out there. And I just feel that it is better for the community to do as I did, to do the right thing, and step down and just move on as a community with proper leadership.
Okay. Thank you very much.
My name is Shannon Lake, I just want to find out who do I got to talk to, I'm not a city official here, but I need, uh, Rock put in that alley down by my house.
But what you need to do, yeah, what you need to do, sir, is contact one of the trustees and/or the President, okay? And then they, then they think, if there's anybody outside there, let's do it now, because...
Yeah, I think how many?
Anyway, hang on, did you start over, sir?
My name is Terry Glenn Tucker, ten oh four seven, ballin, U two. In regard to surplus funds, how many of those surplus funds were, uh, acquired through pending grants, or any grant applications to the federal and state?
None.
Is there any pending or being drafted this time?
None.
What are our public services doing with, with that time?
We have already got one grant, we have done our work with that Seward grant, and we are paying that bill off, and we cannot do another grant until we get that loan paid off, because we do not have the money to do another one. That is why we will not.
If you want to give a grant, you should be at least writing out the next draft.
We have done so, and they have been refused, because we already got...
That don't mean you have to submit them, that should be an ongoing process.
Yes, it is, and then every four years you have to do another count of how many people in the community are low income also, that's the door to door. I've done it, I've done it, I've worked four different times, so I know.
Uh, another situation, I was told I had to remove my vehicle by my landlord, and he was told it was done by, told by Richard to catch the roof, and I see plenty of other vehicles in this town that can have...
I don't know, I don't know what you're even talking about.
Well, supposedly it came from the board, as a matter of fact, the same attorney that represents the city represents...